Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the town board of Newcastle's work session of October fifteenth twenty twenty four. So today we're going to start off with our budget process. And Rob, dearie, our controller is going to lead us through that. We're going to have this evening going through several of the department budgets and we're going to finish up on Friday morning, um, starting at eight AM uh, to continue the, to continue the process. So I will hand it over to Rob.
Okay. Good evening everyone, um, last Friday, I think, Thursday or Friday, we distributed the tentative budget to the town board, uh, I think that was Jill's budget message. So the budget message is, um, is a summary, pretty lengthy summary of everything contained in the budget. Um, what you're gonna hear tonight and on Friday morning will be each department head explaining in greater detail what their budget requests are. Jill and I, um, met with the department heads and kind of collaborated to come up with the budget right here. I don't think there are really any requests that they have, uh, submitted to us that we didn't transmit to you. We didn't really change anything this year. We were all kind of on the same page. So, uh, you'll have an opportunity to ask in detail any questions you have for the department heads and, um, the board can then make any changes. This is the tentative version of the budget, so this is just the, uh, kind of the work in copy, so changes can be made at this point in time. Jill's summary, of course, is based on this version of the budget. Any changes that we make will change the proposed tax rate, um, levy, um, compliance with the tax gap, et cetera, so. Okay, so, uh, we're gonna start tonight with Justice Court. We have Judge Kraus, we have Diana.
Judge Chorkin is sitting in, uh, Peekskill, so.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
And, uh, and we have Andrea, our newest member of the staff.
Hello.
Hi.
Welcome. Not just the court, but the entire town.
Thank you.
This is her official first day as a permanent full-time employee.
Okay, well, well, welcome and thank you for taking the time to present your budget to us and, and for working on this budget. I know that every department works very hard, um, throughout the year to, to create this budget. So, thank you and agains.
You're, you're, you're very welcome. Um, so, um, I think actually the presentation is pretty straightforward. Um, uh, the only real, uh, increase, uh, uh, for this year is, um, well, there are two things. One is that the, um, the court clerks get a stipend, uh, which, uh, I can explain, but I don't think that was in the preliminary budget. And that's, uh, three thousand dollars. So that should be added. Um, and, uh, other than that, we are asking for a little bit more, uh, overtime pay, uh, for, or not overtime pay, rather, um, contractual services, um, which is our court expenditure and, um, I guess Jesse would be covered under that too. Our, our translator. Um, but otherwise, uh, it's, I think it's quite straightforward. I'm happy to respond to any questions anybody may have.
Judge Kraus, just to clarify, the stipend that you mentioned is not here.
So I'll, I'll just point out it's included in the overtime line. It's something they've been receiving for multiple years.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
So it's, uh, I don't know, in the prior, uh, contract, it was added and that's for, uh, for the
It's been a long time.
The court clerks are available unfortunately twenty-four hours a day. They get phone calls, um, at any hour of the day if there might be
Why don't you tell her on her very first day of arriving she's coming?
So, um,
We wanted to make sure she'd be to.
If I, if I sort of call you like Tuesday morning, I could call you in your contract.
She does get those calls sometimes.
I could, I'll call you.
I was in, I was in Rome, Italy and I got called, so, when I was on vacation.
I mean, it happens. Just by way of example, um, the week before last, the police called you at about five AM. So Dai has to then round up a legal aid for an arraignment on Saturday morning. Uh, she had to find a, uh, legal aid lawyer, um, which she did around, uh, eight o'clock.
About seven o'clock.
Called me. I was, uh, getting ready to tee off. And they got me on the first tee before I hit the ball, so.
Good timing.
A quick question, is there, you, the town, if the town is paying for translation interpretation services, what do large municipalities do when they have a large interpreting meeting community? Is there's no state reimbursement for any of that? That's all added?
Twenty-five dollar state reimbursement per session.
Yeah.
Per session, so if you need to hold that person for the entirety of the evening or trial, that's on us.
Yeah, it is.
Yes. They've had, uh, Mandarin interpreters.
I, I know, we, we pretty much have to have this.
Why do we have to? I didn't realize that.
Twenty-five dollars from the county.
The county, not even state.
Yeah.
County.
These counties. And the stipend covers, you know, we have to have an attorney and an interpreter provided at arraignment. And so I have to make those arrangements off-hours when someone's arrested.
Well, those are, those are important services, but nevertheless, they're mandated and no one else is, they pay for them, so.
It needs to be processed. Yeah.
Yeah.
They are mandated.
Yeah.
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 The stipends are similar to water department and DPW because they are also on-call twenty-four hours.
Yes, sir.
So each of those departments has designated staff that the phone call would come to. And if you're, I think they rotate them annually, you only have two court clerks, so, and we, we
I will, yeah. Um, the county, uh, court administration has for a very long time spoken about central locations for arraignment. They are still nowhere near providing that. They still have not, they, they intend to implement that, that, um, procedure in the cities and they still have not gotten there. So we are, you know, last in pecking order, so.
What would Dai have thought about is a, a central arraignment part so that during off-hours, everybody from the county would take their
I mean, it really makes so much sense.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't. Um, depends, you know, there, there are times when, um, not that I know the person, but I'm familiar with, uh, where the person may be employed. You take a person to White Plains, they might not know that and, um, uh, uh, just, uh, sometimes there's some kind of such a doing it lawfully.
Well, nevertheless, we are where we are now, so.
I've not, not things that we have in our control, so.
And I, I thank you for all the, all the work you do. I don't think many people know that you do this extent of work and overtime and how, oh, demanding this is, so I thank you very much.
You're very welcome. And of the, of the entire town and, um,
Can I ask a question?
I hope people, uh, learn a little bit as they watch these meetings, hopefully. Yeah, questions?
Yeah, so, um, longevity pay is going down, that's because of retirement?
Longevity only applies to, uh, staff that are here five years or more.
So the, so the retirement.
So, we're losing somebody that had longevity and we're gaining Andrea and it'll be five years until she gets longevity.
And, and how about part-time help? What's the?
So we bumped that up a little bit because, um, Andrea's new. So, um, at the last board meeting, you approved Andrea permanently and Kathy coming back to assist on a part-time basis. She's gonna come back and help out on court nights, on Thursday nights and on Friday mornings as well. Dai is typically not in the office on Fridays. Um, so, uh, until Andrea kind of comes up to speed, we anticipate the beginning of next year that we might need a little extra help and Kathy has agreed to do that. So we just moved that number up just a little bit for next year to be able to. This is an awful lot of information as I'm sure Andrea will tell you to absorb and, uh,
Court nights can be a little hectic.
Yeah.
And we've always had, um, you know, six for staff.
Yeah. Yeah.
Diana Caffarelli, um, helps us from, from mom's office and, um, we've always had a, kind of another part-time person. Or not always, but probably the last twenty years.
Thanks, just wanted to note that those are, yeah, um, kind of things going on there.
And Judge Kraus, I'll point out, um, you didn't mention, I did include your request, uh, when we met with Judge Kraus. Um, and you probably can't even tell us when the last raise that you had was, but
I think it's thirteen years.
It's actually more than that because Noah was appointed in two thousand thirteen and in two thousand fourteen, we made a request and at that point, we hadn't had a raise of six or seven years.
So the, the pay for this year was twenty-seven thousand each, twenty-five per judge. They asked to increase it by three thousand a year to three, thirty thousand each, twenty-five and that's included in this version of the budget.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I just found out about that.
Thank you for holding out for so long.
We, we had a conversation today, kind of Robert and Christina. Um, we'd like to, I guess, maybe speak to the board about parking in the town and, um, handling, uh, parking hearings and, um, maybe doing it on a s- what, what we do is, um, we've included it twice a month on a court night. It's very, very chaotic for us because when, uh, during, uh, the aftermath of permit renewal season, we get a lot of people that come in. We can't really accommodate them because we have such full court schedules and we'll be inundated with twenty-five, thirty people for parking. And, um, we've been talking about doing it on a separate night, maybe once a month, maybe on Wednesday. I was thinking, and I'm just throwing this out there and Jeremy would probably have the best insight because he was a town prosecutor. And Jill?
I don't think you hear about parking.
Then their cars then, they just wouldn't have to go horses.
That's so weird.
We thought you were saying.
Original, not for us.
But this is a popular issue between the lines.
And, um, now, do you, do you think that's a result of the new system? And do you think that will even out or decrease some of your?
On my next year, twenty-one years.
Oh, yes, yes, I did, yes, I did.
And Rob, Michelle, you parking was a disaster when I got here.
So this is an ongoing situation.
An ongoing thing.
It's not a result of haunting or the.
It's an ongoing thing that, um,
People are very adamant.
It, it's surging at the moment because of the new system and, and we were talking today also because of coming out of COVID, the enforcement has been, uh, the renewal times have changed. The enforcement has slacked off.
Right.
Now we're finally back to the normal renewals. We have a new parking system and we're full, fully staffed with the parking enforcement officers.
Parking enforcement.
Right, so people, we're back to normal, but people don't expect enforcement.
Correct. Yes.
But I have to tell you because I'm very active in the court clerks association, um, parking enforcement personnel is not always easy to find, uh, find and maintain.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and Brunksville, which is a village that takes in an excess of a million dollars revenue in parking, I had a conversation with that court clerk and she was having some issues with the personnel. So that adds to our, um, that added this year to our problem because parking, we had no parking enforcement for a while.
Yeah.
Many of the parking enforcement employees are on police lists and they get hired and they go.
Oh, I see, I see.
Okay.
Well, and the other thing we should point out is that on the average court night, we can have sixty-five moving violations, not parking violations. And so you've got a courtroom full of defendants and oftentimes they bring somebody with them or maybe they have a lawyer, so it gets really crowded in here.
Yeah.
So, well, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah. I think that this merits us a fuller, more wholesome conversation.
I, I was thinking of a different night, maybe once a month, the Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, we, we, we have exceptional town prosecutors, so.
But would this affect the, I mean, would this increase costs to do this?
Yeah.
I mean, I, it's not in this budget to do another night, right?
Um, it would probably increase the cost a little bit. You know, we, we would have to assess if this is once a month for
That, that's part of the discussion, that, that room.
couple of hours, right, we would.
Right, I'm just wondering, I, I mean, are we continuing to have that as part of this budget?
Well, I mean, we, the budget is, we're just starting the budget process, so, you know, we
For next year.
I think, I think it warrants some foot from the police department and Jill and, and, you know, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm just saying, no, it's good to bring it up now, but this is not really the time to have this, this fuller discussion.
Right.
We can go back and forth on that. Um, maybe we should set up a meeting sooner rather than later as, you know,
I, I definitely like to have a process in place before the next parking permit renewal season.
Maybe, maybe next week or Yeah.
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay.
That's fair. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have a meeting at the staff level and just see, you know, what the logistics of that, that look like.
Yeah, let's go here.
That would be helpful, okay.
Yeah, we, we, we take an awful lot of abuse parking. I have people that come in with four hundred dollar vehicle in traffic, um, versus people with a thirty-dollar parking ticket and it's, it's, it's abuse of.
Um, that, that should not happen. Should not.
Yep, anyway.
Well, okay, thank you for.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much and, um,
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Welcome.
Good to see you.
Good night, Andrea.
She's doing a terrific job too.
But this is all. Yeah, welcome Andrea.
Don't listen to Andrea.
Thank you.
Don't listen to what they say.
All right, thanks for coming. Good to see you.
Good night, Josh.
Good conversation. Well, to be continued.
Good night.
But we've done, uh,
Did you hear about the news starting to?
Yeah.
I, I sound like a core figure.
Hang on now, so no.
Do you have a thousand? We're doing Josh.
We are going to continue with.
Yeah, on the windshield? Yeah.
Good evening.
Good morning.
And hello, Josh. So.
You can have an autograph.
Well, I am my own autograph.
Yes, you are. Okay, so we're continuing with the town assessor's office.
Okay, thanks for having me tonight.
Rob, did you want to introduce, um, something first or?
No, I think, uh, yeah, Josh will, will, will take it over.
Can I go right in there?
I have up on the screen and, um, I did mark everyone that's coming.
You just sent him what page? I'm gonna start my assessment.
Uh, seventy-five.
All right. Sorry, I got my new glasses.
The brief thing.
Can you say? That seems like a no.
Go ahead.
Oh, you're ready, sorry.
Oh, yeah, you're on, yeah.
I thought I was gonna have a big introduction, okay.
Well, I think you're all pretty familiar with our tax assessor, but, uh,
That, that could be fortunate or unfortunate, um, so
But we'll let you jump right into it.
I will, we're happy to.
No, yeah, thank you for coming, Josh, and taking the time to do this. I, you know, budget time is hectic.
Oh, I'm sorry, we, we didn't give them a choice.
And, um, we
We didn't, we didn't.
She told them they had to come.
No, I guess I'm just giving him a little bit of, you know,
I appreciate that.
Congratulations and thanks, you know.
Yes, thank you.
It's fine. I asked for, I said electricity, it's okay.
I understand, but, but you could just borrow our, our stuff.
I have two copies there.
And I'm here.
Oh, you can't do this on your phone.
No, it's for your phone. Thank you, thank you. I just thought she was watching a video. I am, on YouTube.
Okay. So if you'd like, I can just hit some of the high points?
I think that's best.
Okay, wait, okay, fine.
Yeah.
Um, so on the first page, which I show is a ten, three, one, ten, seven, two, how do you prefer?
Um, it's, it's up on the screen, so if, if you're following along on PDF, it's seventy-five.
Okay.
I've tagged the beginning of each section.
Yeah, thank you, that's beautiful.
So that would be tab number two. And if you just go to that and kind of page through, um, you'll have Josh's whole budget there.
Okay, so why don't we start, um, on the overtime budget?
Sure.
You'll notice the, uh, an eye-popping fifty-five percent increase. Um, let not your heart be troubled, it was only a thousand dollars. Increase year over year. We are undergoing a software conversion. And so, uh, at this point, it's projected that they're gonna be done April, May, which means we would have to be running a dual platform, which means we have to enter everything twice into both systems just to make sure that everything carries over from year to year. So I added that should we need it.
It's not so bad for doing double work. Are you sure about that?
Well, I'm optimistic.
Okay.
And the longevity also, I think.
And the longevity also correct, that's contractual. Uh, Carolina will begin her fifth year in July and so we're happy to have her and she'll be able to, um, receive that at that point. Uh, data processing, um, I had about three percent for the current software program that we're using. Um, below that, it's our tax mapping and, uh, line work. So what they do is every time a property trades or sells, they pull the Schedule A from the deed and they redraw each parcel. Um, and so in normal years, it's a couple hundred, you see upwards of three hundred, three fifty. So, um, even though this is showing about a ten percent increase, it's only about forty dollars if you sell and that's pretty important. Um, if you go down a couple more to dues and training, you'll see a thirty-three percent and a hundred percent increase. Um, percentage-wise, they're large monetarily, they are not. Um, back to Carolina, she has expressed interest in, uh, furthering her career with the town and so she has, um, asked to obtain her appraiser assistant license. Uh, the license fee for that is combined about three hundred twenty-five dollars and then the training on top of that is about thirteen hundred, three hundred twenty-five, something like that. So I know that, uh, contractually, there's a, she pays half of it upfront upon passing, then she's reimbursed. So her intent was to do that. She'd sent me my bill earlier this year, so that's reflected in that.
And the board may amend, remember that we have a, uh, a further contractual obligation on our employees that they have to stay here for five years after they get through their education, otherwise they have to reimburse the general.
It's a worthwhile investment.
Right.
I agree.
Yeah. And, and she can pass.
We'd love to be able to.
We want professional learning.
For sure, yeah.
Yes. Okay, that was that excitement for the first page. Um, now come the cuts. So we, we've lost, um, about fourteen percent from our contractual services, I believe, oh, four, nine, zero. We are down to, uh, six board assessment review members and so we're gonna have, um, we're gonna carry one alternate. Um, and because they are paid four hundred dollars per year, that's why we reduced that by four.
Me and all, huh?
Well, costs going up so much, we'd say.
You could come back on that, McDonald's maybe?
Yeah. Um, and we were able to cut twenty percent or twenty-five thousand dollars from our property tax refunds. Uh, we, God bless you.
Thank you, thank you.
We projected out, uh, we typically carry a hundred thousand for the refunds. Uh, rarely did we hit that, but it is nice, we do have a couple larger cases coming on. Remember, uh, towards the end of, I mean, middle of twenty-four, we, uh, we settled Chaparral Crossing and so you remember that was a pretty hefty refund, so that was what's being projected
Yeah.
that would, uh, go over the normal one hundred thousand. Um, and I think that's, I think that's about it. Questions?
It's pretty straightforward for me, anybody?
Very exciting. You know, I always like to say paper clips and salary and it, and it truly is just about. All right.
Okay, anybody?
I have nothing for you.
Yeah, I got nothing.
That means I did a good job.
You did, thanks, Josh.
You did a very good job.
Thank you, Josh.
Very good, thank you.
We'll discuss that in executive session.
Okay.
Consider the block. So many small fees, costs.
It's a lot. Less than three hundred.
I will do that. All right, good night, everybody, thanks.
Good night.
Okay, have a good evening.
I had so much trouble, wow.
That's just a little room.
Yeah, really. Time members and big percentages.
Yeah, I, I have to tell you that in the past, board members have like, you know, circled and highlighted percentages and ends up being like seventeen dollars.
Fourteen, you get lost in the percentage.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, I, I can look at the percentages.
I've been reading it, I love it.
I look at the percentages and then I go back.
Right.
And you're like, oh, twelve ninety-nine.
I'm spooked.
Yeah.
All right, so now we're going to cover, um, the development department.
Right.
I love development.
How do you think, Sabrina? How's everything?
Good evening.
So Sabrina has, uh, a little bit larger of a budget than, uh, than the last two, uh, that we talked to. So the development department, bless you, uh, encompasses the building and engineering budget, the planning budget, the zoning budget and, uh, new this year or newly increased this year, the stormwater budget. So, uh, Sabrina will walk us through.
Correct.
Rob, what's, what's the page online?
Uh, ninety-nine.
All right, Sabrina.
All right, let me, uh, give you the highlights, right? Hang on two seconds, I wanna, so we are very busy in my office. Um, I just wanna say for this month alone, we've had a hundred and eighty-six percent increase in fees collected. We've, uh, received over two thousand phone calls in the month, uh, for twenty days and we've conducted over four hundred and fifty-eight inspections. Um, and that's roughly six staff, uh, between building and engineering who are out there in the field. That is indicative of what's going on. Our planning board is not very busy. People are not subdividing or doing a lot of work outside of their properties. Most of the work is occurring inside their properties. Uh, our zoning board is pretty active, um, with people trying to do additions and things that are not seen by the planning board. The architectural review board is very busy. So we are busy and it is definitely reflective of what's happening out in the world.
Um, I have a question, does that add to the growth factor? The, the building?
No.
The internal, only someone adds to their, uh, footprint?
Yeah, right, correct.
Only additions, that's right.
Addition, addition. So, um,
And the building in Chaparral Crossing.
And the building.
Well, of course, yeah, we have a few dollars.
Well, well, we have been, we have been very, uh, lucky to be able to count on the increases from Chaparral Crossing for the past five years. That's slowing down. I think there's maybe ten or eleven units that are left to go under construction.
Oh, wow, that's crazy.
Do you know how many, would you know how many have been sold?
Well, almost all of them.
Yeah, oh, I haven't.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they're, they're not sitting on the market.
Which is great.
Wow, yeah.
The price tags.
A significant price tag in taxes.
The, the significant price tag plus the maintenance, the, the property maintenance fees
The HOA.
and the membership fees, the HOA.
It's a good product and it's desirable.
That's right, it's beautiful, it's beautiful.
Yeah, yeah.
The further you drive in there, I mean, I'm very impressed.
You tested. Not yet. So right. So with, with that said, we're very busy, but I think the, you'll see some significant increases in the budget. If you kind of look along the line, we have a, have a, we have some subtractions, but we also have a three hundred percent increase in our internship line. Um, that is reflective over what we experienced this past summer. This past summer, we had several interns come in and they did fantastic work. You saw some of that product.
You sure did.
They really helped us move forward with our own internal products. But we, one, did not budget for them appropriately last year and we increased our, our rates to be more competitive with other companies, businesses, so that we could get the higher level interns. So, you know, my office managed three, four interns this year and they all had a great time, learned a lot and helped us with our projects. So it was very helpful. Um, so that's a three hundred percent increase there. You'll also see, um, an increase, a substantial increase in our training and instruction under our engineering line and that is directly related to the MS four requirements. And that's training all of our engineering staff, um, with the appropriate training that they need to, that we need for them to comply with our stormwater plan.
Are there going to be increases as they relate to the MS four legislation in other areas besides planning?
Yes. Yes, in DPW and potentially in recreation.
So we'll say this year, what we did is, this is a very, it was a very tight budget, number one. Um, so what we've done and we'll, if you only get to the stormwaters.
Well, we can jump if you want, it's on page thirty-three.
Was there, uh, uh, one more?
Well, let's go in order.
Yeah, why don't you go in order, but.
I put on, well, then you can point them out.
You can point them out.
Okay, I'll do that question.
What line was that, that you were talking about? What was the line? Um, the training line or the intern line? The training. The training line is, um, eight, oh, oh, four, six, oh.
And it's.
Okay, thank you. I see. Okay, um, and then there really isn't any substantial change, to be honest with you, until stormwater.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, and stormwater is under eighty, ninety, oh, six. Um and stormwater is under eighty, ninety, oh six, twenty. There's a new admin category in stormwater with a hundred thousand next to it. And that hundred thousand, and I need to give a lot of credit to Rob because he did some reorienting some of our other lines. We had a line for master planning of fifty thousand dollars. That was reduced down to zero, or today we learned we need to bump it back up a little bit. But it is, was reduced substantially and that money was then reallocated to stormwater. So finding money where we had allocations already to make this stormwater line whole. This hundred thousand is a hundred thousand for the first or the second year really of implementation. It will help us get our systems up and running for storm, for managing the MS four permit. We need to do a lot with our stormwater mapping. Our conveyance system mapping, creating a database where we can log information, tie into DPW's iWork system. Really make sure we have all of the data that is attached to geographic mapping.
This is all requirement.
This is key. This is all the requirements.
We don't have any say whether we want to do it or not, we're mandated to do it.
Correct, we are mandated to do this and this hundred thousand will help us set up that system. I would imagine in the twenty twenty-six budget, you will start looking at staff. And staff and management's in internal management.
Um how much, how much do you see this going up?
Into In future years?
Exactly.
Yeah. What was the budget that Bart came out with?
It's over, over a million.
Yeah.
For for the
For the entire program.
But some some of those things, uh the the back truck, for example. We're purchasing that, that's a capital project that we have applied for a couple different grants. Anything that's not fully funded will probably borrow the remainder, which will be paid out over time. So there will be large costs associated with it, but they'll be spread out. As Sabrina mentioned, this is a placeholder now. The way things work with the tax gap, you need to kind of set the floor and each year try to bump them up. And I I liken this to the road paving budget that kind of predates everybody here. But you know, that was at one point in time, three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand a year, broke to one point five million. It's necessary, it wasn't
It wasn't done over a year.
Right, they didn't give it the attention that they needed for a bit. So in a tax cap world, you couldn't go from three hundred thousand to one point five million. You had to do that incrementally and that's what we planned to do here.
Yeah. And 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 honestly, you know, we have several grants, we're waiting on decision. And that may change the use of this hundred thousand because you know, we asked for seventy-five thousand to help us with our mapping system.
Can you just explain how you're landing on a hundred thousand?
I don't wanna say arbitrary, but as a placeholder to put it in there right now. So we we need
We we could have put twice as much.
That's my point, how are you gonna really come into that point, buddy?
We 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 don't wanna stay, we wanna stay within the cap.
Yeah.
We, right, we need to stay within the cap, I mean.
Yeah. All the uh discretion I was spending.
I that I get, but what just is going through my head is if it's so far off.
We know that we need this mapping system. The mapping system is estimated to cost about seventy-five thousand dollars. We wrote a grant for seventy-five thousand dollars. There's another twenty-five thousand dollars to help us get our website up and running. You know, these are smaller expenses to do those little things. Take the forms and put them in electronic file. So that when our field folks are out there, they have it on the tablet and are entering right into the database. These mechanic things that we need to get in place so that we can do the inspections. Mailings, we have to do, uh we, you guys are gonna need to make a decision on how we're implementing the septic pump out program. Right? There's going to be mailing that's involved, the mailing is sixty-seven thousand dollars, you know.
Sounds like staging almost, yeah.
Exactly, so so we're trying to identify what those first year costs will be and where that money will come from. This one hundred thousand dollars and and as we get into this budget, I'll point out the line where in my budget is contributing to that hundred thousand. Right? It just means that we're not gonna have that money in that line, it's gonna be in this line.
Is there anything that the county or state is considering for like shared services or economies of scale on this? It feels like it's more burdensome on the smaller communities, relatively speaking.
It It absolutely is, it absolutely is.
Especially our community.
I have tried to coordinate with the county, particularly on minimum measure one, which is education. And minimum measure three, which involves mapping. And the response I got is we're taking care of ours first, we'll come back to you.
Seems true, exciting.
And when you talk to some of the equipment that we need, a street sweeper or a vac truck, when we need it, everybody else needs it at the same time. You know, we looked at that years ago when the state wanted us to look at shared services and you know, it snowplowed. Well, when we need it, Pleasantville needs it too, we can't share one with, nobody needs it June, but we all need it.
Unless there's an organization that's going to have a fleet
Yeah.
of vac trucks and is gonna service this for all of the municipalities, there's no way we can share services.
Well, I mean, that's like kind of, that was, I think essentially my question was, you know, have they looked at doing something like that?
Well, and
Because every time you do it, you replicate the same thing, small, small, all over the county and the state. If there was at least some
So there's a couple problems there. I think that that thought is a great thought, it has to happen at a higher level. A town board to town board discussion. But there's also union issues. Some of the work is union based work for DPW.
So the, so the county or the state would have to be
It has to happen at a much higher level than than local government.
Right.
So so those are the stumbling blocks, not to say that you can't get around it, but there has to be a willingness and an effort to get that done.
Yeah.
So that's why mapping, the education, that that's all stuff that doesn't implicate the union.
Yeah.
That would have been the easier one.
Some of this to start
Yeah, there's there's a lot to navigate here.
Yeah.
To, uh you know, we talked in the stormwater meetings to training, right? So that our guys are are trained when they're doing the inspections, when they're doing the reporting on the inspections, understand that. A lot of that can be done with our staff, they don't know how to do it yet, they need to learn how to do it. Um once they do, it will be done internally. Yeah, the the workload's gonna be huge, but
But we have to document it. And we have to document who's being trained, the date they were trained, what they were being trained on, who attended. You know, there's certain requirements for this training and we have to document it. And creating a system that's easy to document so that when we have to report on it and somebody wants to come in and audit us, it's all seamless.
Right, that that too would have been a great county project.
Yeah.
State project.
Oh, absolutely.
Coming into the vacation, there there's no question.
Yeah.
So when you talk about the unfunded mandates, this is the frustration.
Yeah.
You know, ev, nobody disagrees with the goals of the MS four, everybody wants clean water, no question. But how do we get there and who's paying for it? And you know, we're lucky in that we're financially sound.
Absolutely.
But there are a lot of municipalities that aren't where we are and they have the same, you know, same responsibilities and the same orders.
And the penalties for not complying with the MS four are almost draconian.
Or obscene.
Yes.
Yeah, it's hard to believe.
So I'm pretty, I mean, I'm thinking about other local municipalities that aren't in the position, I say this all the time. I don't know how they're going to comply.
Yeah, North Salem has no staff, right? We have an engineer, a planner, a commissioner of public works, there's a whole staff that does implementation under public works. A lot of municipalities don't even have that.
That's right.
It's the town supervisor and they have a consultant. And so so you know, we're pretty fortunate because we are able to do a lot with what we have. You know, the the number of inspections that have occurred, the four hundred and fifty-eight, a lot of those are engineering inspections. Under the MS four permit, we are required to inspect or notify somebody to inspect and provide us documentation. All stormwater management practices that are located in the town, whether they are public or private. DPW does our eight to twelve pro, public practices. There are hundreds of private practices that we need to ensure are being maintained. That involves mailing letters to home, doing research, what are those practices? Who's responsible for those practices, sending notification that you have to maintain, going out and ensuring that they're maintained, getting a report back. So there's a lot of different levels of outreach, communication cost that goes into that. And so those are the systems that was, I mean, there's
So Sabrina, the little detail that you're describing to us. Has anyone or any group sat down with a state representative to describe this in some way?
I don't know, I would, I don't know.
You know, because I think that you, and and we get back to this periodically and you describe it so so well and so clearly. And you know, somebody wrote these requirements. I have a feeling it was that, what was it, was it in the West Wing where they just threw some summer interns in a room without sleep, without food and said, draft a healthcare bill for the country?
Yeah.
My understanding, I think they haven't asked you for
Was it like that?
I mean, the
For comment on this, I don't
Well, they they did, there was several
Yeah, there was.
Then they made a comment period, right?
There there were, there were. We commented on the first version of this MS four regulation and they had to rewrite it. It was much more under the first version. The second version came out during COVID and we put up a stink, it was during COVID and then all of a sudden, this one was promulgated.
Yeah, they just came out.
Yeah, and so there is a workgroup meeting with the woman who's in charge of this permit with state DEC. She does not wanna talk about any issue that we have with the permit, she's there to explain what we have to do. We know what we have to do. It's the way in which we have to do it. You know, Bart was very candid the other day. It's not a problem collecting, oh, I mean, it is a problem, it's challenging, but you collect all the sediment, but what are we supposed to do with it? We have to dispose of it properly. That means it needs to be tested to make sure it's not contaminated and it needs to be brought to a place, which there are very few, to dispose of it. There's not that many and we're subject to a private entities.
And we have to pay for all of that.
Yeah, yeah, well, and that's the thing, the cost of disposal.
That's true.
Yeah. And with the frequency that he is required to sweep and clean out catch basins, particularly in commercial areas, is 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 demanding and it's
This is like an exponential increase.
Yes.
Yes.
A little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, when we talk about um a new street sweeper, it doesn't mean we're putting the old street sweeper out to practice. But that new street sweeper needs new staff to operate it, a new flag truck to go in front of it. You know, so we're talking five new people right there and two new pieces of equipment.
Well, I so appreciate the way that our town staff has really jumped in, made sure that we are compliant or going to be compliant. And you guys are helping us navigate what the costs are going to be because it's not a one-time fixed cost. It's, to Holly's point, seems like it's going to get worse before it gets better. And I appreciate that you guys have
Thank you.
the the institutional knowledge to help us navigate through this, but it's awful, awful piece of legislation.
Yeah, I mean, credit goes to Bob and Bart and Ike and Miguel, who works with Bob.
Yep.
For for helping us do it.
Yeah, it's a, it's a team effort.
Yeah.
Yeah, we really
And and we discussed this
But this is only the first part.
This discussed it time and time again. And we always come back to these points.
Yeah.
Well, Chris was a good point.
And uh uh our our segment.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because he understands, he was a former supervisor, so he understands.
And he could talk to him and
Not that he wasn't, Chris was
No, no, and and I have to tell you that that Chris has tried multiple years running now to try to get us the the grant for the back truck. And
Yeah, this is the third try.
Yes.
And he's he's like embarrassed, he's like, I don't know what to do, I don't know what to do.
I don't, I just think it goes beyond the grants, though.
I I think it goes beyond the grants, though.
Correct, yes.
I think so. I think it goes beyond, beyond this.
We should have to be putting a pot of money in a pot with others to 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 be to be funded.
Correct.
And I have to tell you, our experience so far is that we have the wrong zip code. They don't see us as needing the money. You know, they've come back to us with, oh, you didn't do this, you didn't fill out this, you know, you didn't include this document in the right section.
Not that I'm advocating for non-compliance, but I really wonder if all municipalities got together and said, Chris is not gonna do it.
Civil disobedience.
I said that, we'll leave her a chat pack, what if we all filed suit?
Yeah. And what are they gonna, what are they gonna, what are they gonna do? They gonna come after every municipality, especially if it's not as enough money or it's
How, how are people going to comply, how?
Not that I'm advocating for that.
No, listen, that's up to you guys, we're trying to comply, we're trying to keep the town compliant.
No stats, no equipment.
No, those fines are so daunting that that we sort of shudder at that. Because if they wanted to use any community as an example, it would be us.
But as Sabrina mentioned, we we have probably one of the better infrastructures to implement this.
Look at what happened.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Um when you're talking about some of the smaller municipalities, it just, not only do they not have the money, they don't have the people to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
And where are they gonna get it?
I have to create departments.
We have to create a department, right? So we're anticipating creating an entire new department to handle just MS four.
No, it'll be under Part C.
Not exactly, but it's gonna feel that way.
Yeah, for sure. So those are really the four areas where you'll see changes in the budget. Um the internships, part-time, training, instruction and stormwater.
Thank you.
Everything else is still uh okay.
Moving forward as it was.
Keeping busy, Sabrina.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Got us back on schedule too, Sabrina.
Impressive.
You know, you always give me a half hour, but we always manage to cut short, so this is where you made that point.
About to the point.
Have a good day, good night.
Good night.
Good luck.
Good night.
Nice to see you all, I'm off to the planning board with, what time is it? I'm only a couple minutes late.
Seven minutes.
Seven hours.
One minute late.
Yep.
Bye.
Just let Ike know we're ready for you.
Okay, now I
Is that on line or pitch?
No, he's
He said you were making them come.
You know what?
They signed with the
I'm gonna run to the restroom.
Okay, we'll take a break.
Since you are, then I will. I didn't wanna be the one to say it, but I need it.
Be twizzler, that's what I want.
Check, do you know?
Yeah, you can like a check.
Do you know our Yeah, did you like our invite, did you want to do a side of the strategy?
I, she did.
Oh, he um, is he still online? Yes.
Joe, do you have an examiner news in your office today by chance, Tim?
No.
Are you pulling out an examiner news?
No. What you for, snap?
Oh, what are we doing?
I, every client, Joe, thank you.
It's
Are we back on?
We're back on.
Okay, everyone. Thanks for your patience. We took a little break. Um, and now we're back with Ike Cuzio and his assistant.
Christine Ray.
Eric Christine Ray. Thank you for Recreation and Parks.
Sorry, keep my stuff in order here.
Yeah.
So Ike and Christine have one of the larger budgets, a little bigger than Sabrina's. So um as we've done tonight, maybe you wanna point out some of either the highlights or some big changes as opposed to just line by line?
Yeah, yeah, I think that would be a lot better for everybody. Try to move this along. Uh
One thirty-two.
Yeah. So first, thanks for having us tonight.
One thirty-two if you're following on the PDA.
Follow the bouncing ball.
Yeah.
Uh, so just the first couple of things I was gonna go over quick is uh some of the projects that we've been fortunate enough to uh complete this year, one which is almost done. I'll run through those real quick for the board. So we finally got the uh exterior of the art center painted. Uh, court of shit, I believe that course. It was uh, looks so much better. Almost a brand new building, but uh no, but it looks great. So we have a little bit more work to do at that facility, but uh we're definitely heading in the right direction. Uh rec field, we did the uh, we renovated the infield this year. Uh, it's a much better playing surface than it had been in the last couple of years. So I have to get that done. Millwood saw the most action this year. We had a new playground, uh, which was completed earlier in the year. Uh, the tennis and pickleball court. Now, we have four pickleball courts over there. It was a brief tease. Apologize to the residents. We had it open for for a hot second before we ended close again uh for the walkway, which we hope to have completed in the next week or so. A week, so uh some really good projects this year. A lot of really good improvements for our facilities. Hopefully, we'll get a few more done there.
That was what the intern presented a few.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, the walkway. She did a phenomenal job with that.
Yeah.
It's great.
Yeah, education for us, so. So those were kind of some of the highlights this year of big projects. Uh, our parks department is always doing a lot of the smaller stuff around town. Jonathan likes to keep those guys busy, so uh he's always looking for some. So they've done a lot of work this year uh throughout our parks and maybe do so going forward. Um, but yeah, we can run through each of these uh budgets, I guess categories. Uh, anybody has any questions before we get started, but in the rec line, there's no real big changes uh for this year. I hope anybody has any questions. We were able to bring on um a new rec supervisor on this today who's been a great addition to the department. We hit the ground running, which was a big help for us because we needed it. We definitely kept him busy. We do have still one more spot to fill. We will hopefully work on that over the next few months and find somebody that we think will be a good fit for it. But other than that, no big uh, no big changes for the uh, for the rec admin uh budget. If anybody has any questions or obviously anything that they felt.
Yep, I'll just say we have included the funds uh in the salaries line for that open position and um it's been open for a bit. We're kind of looking for the right person. It's um county civil service is difficult to navigate.
Yeah.
It's been difficult to find the right fit, so uh we don't wanna make a decision that we may regret at some point, so we're we're uh, we're still looking.
Yeah, I think what's been great is Jill and Rob have been very supportive. You know, I don't wanna hire just to hire. We tried to go down that road in the past. Didn't really work out well, so I'd like to avoid that going forward. Uh, the staff have been great. Christine, Jamie, Bruce, who jumped on halfway through the year. Uh, they've done a great job kind of juggling that thing, you know, keeping us rolling, so. But yeah, hopefully we'll find somebody who's a good fit for us down there.
Ike, how are we doing with the Getney Pond?
So Getney Pond, actually in the parks budget line, we did uh, we did add additional funding for uh maintenance for that pond going forward.
Which line is that?
Uh, it's gonna be under the uh maintenance line, uh maintenance of landing buildings, zero four eight zero, zero 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 one.
The one that went up forty-four percent?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So we added additional funding there to cover uh maintenance going forward. As far as the immediate work that needs to be done, we've been bouncing back and forth uh with the company RJ, uh the department just trying to find it, the right formula for the distributive assurance. We sent it back to them about a week ago uh to Tigress Company, so we're just waiting for them to come with a new COI and hopefully we'll all get the uh mapping done.
Okay, so we're not at the permit stage?
No, we'll do the mapping first, uh, and then we'll, 'cause we wanna know what we're dealing with in there as far as how much material and all that, and that will kind of dictate
Right.
the permits that uh Tigress goes and gets from the DEC, so.
Okay, and then we'd also need to be responsible for the removals, so it would be helpful to know exactly what's coming now.
Yes.
Right, yeah, we kind of don't wanna get too far ahead before we get all the information here, yeah.
Right.
Sure, we need to do it right. What what's what's the timing?
But the plan is still, the plan is still to have this done by spring of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, that would be great.
Yeah.
Before the before before the um derby?
And yeah, like
Yes, that would be nice. That would be a good
Fly fish this year.
Yeah.
The funds for the remediation are already in the budget for
For next year, for this year, they're not. That wasn't on the uh, on the radar.
We're already concerned, yeah, I see, you know, he's called out the maintenance, but still the remediation work, is that that's it?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what that's gonna cost.
So the the ma- the the mapping we'll 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 cover right now, um, but it's the remediation work that we need to, once we figure out the costs and then hopefully
Not being here for it.
Okay.
Ross built some funding for that year and I think we're working on direct funding as well, so. Um, but once we kind of nail down that estimate, we'll be able to work on that.
And I know Ike, we talked to Parks and Rec about separating out what we have to do now for Getney and then maintenance going forward for Getney because the quote that we're getting from the company that's gonna do all the work now is very high. I know Ike, you've been looking at someone maybe a little bit more local, just a smaller cost associated with just the general upkeep of Getney.
Right.
So we're not only is having to do this.
Yeah, the annual Right. Yeah, there's just other things coming.
We've got some recommendations. Nicole Rocha sent a recommendation. Did you, did you see?
So thank you for that.
She did?
Yeah, she has a a pond in her.
Okay.
In her area, like a lake association.
Okay.
Anyway, we we've had recommendations here and there, but I'm sure you'll find appropriate.
Yeah, we've used Pond Lake Connection in the past. Uh, they're pretty reasonable and that's who I would look at first going forward. Black Rock, Iris is a little pricey.
Great, okay.
They're they're New Jersey, I understand.
Yeah.
And that probably
They have they have to have a state license, I assume, for the DEC one?
Yeah, they can still get the permitting um through there, but you know, I think that has a lot to do with why do they cost more, right?
Oh, okay.
Because they're coming up from Jersey, it's just uh
For traveling, yeah. And that's what they said with the disposal, right? And we would not wanna use them for disposal because
Correct.
It would cost us a fortune, yeah.
All right, good to know you too.
Yeah. Right, yeah, so we'll we'll make it work.
Wait, thank you, Ike.
Yeah, um, so that was really the 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 big one in the in the park section was that additional cost there.
Just um one question on the line, um, zero two two zero, the equipment.
Yeah. Uh, yeah.
There's a decent increase there.
So that equipment is, I'm gonna go back and look. We had a mower, uh I can't see that sample, I don't know. I could tell you in one second.
We had a electric mower, a field painter
Yeah, thanks.
and a battery pack blower.
Yeah, two battery pack blowers were thirty-eight hundred. The electric mower was just over twenty-eight and the field painter was thirty-five hundred.
The SAP will be happy to hear about the electric
Battery pack?
The
Battery pack.
The electric mower, I also think we've included funds, but I think we're gonna be able to um fund the, we may be able to fund the whole thing. We've got a nicer to grant that we've kind of broken up into bits and pieces. We've got money going every, we have like five different nicer to grants for different amounts and Sabrina broke them all up to pay for a bunch of different projects. So we may have this, I think we have that fully funded at this point.
Did we get there? Okay.
I I think we did.
Awesome, sounds wonderful.
We can call it, yeah.
I know at one point we were kind of almost there, we were like halfway there, but
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna, we'll leave the funds in the budget.
Yeah.
Because we can't be totally sure, but yeah.
And what we're doing is like the field painter painters replacement, uh, the other one we've had for probably almost five years now. It gets a lot of lot of hours on that thing, so. Uh, and the same thing with the mower. We were starting to get, we're getting close to the end of life of all the landscape equipment that we originally bought a few years ago. Um, and so we figured we'd start here with the electric mower and see how that works and
Predating most of the board, we actually contracted that out. And a few years back, Jonathan and Ike came to us with a plan to actually bring it in-house. We were having not great success with the contractors and the price was high and and they weren't reliable. And we brought it in-house with Jonathan. He's done a great job, but at that point in time, we had to buy all the equipment from scratch, from the beginning because we didn't have any of it. So um as it starts to wear out, we're starting to have to replace some of it.
Yeah, uh, the good thing is we're all caught up with our with our fleet, with our vehicles, so you know, it's, well, the next thing is just to start working away to the equipment.
Yeah. That's why you look at, there are zeros on the vehicle line because we didn't need it this year, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Very nice. Any other questions?
Um, I wanna mention that last week at our Parks and Rec, we had a visitor, Mike Wolfson came to talk to us about the nine eleven memorial. He was anticipating the twenty-fifth anniversary and wanting to make sure that the memorial is in pristine condition and has been kept up the way that was intended when he first worked on having it built. And so he came to us with, you know, two years in mind, wondering if we could allocate some money to fixing up the fountain. There was a few things that he noticed that weren't quite working the way that he wanted them to work. So where we landed was first Ike and I were thinking we might take a field trip out there to have him show us what is broken, what needs to be repaired. And he had talked, Mike had spoken with the person that built the fountain in the memorial to begin with. And that man had offered to repair some of the stuff since he felt very invested in the project. So we thought we might bring him out too, see if he might give us maybe a reasonable price since this was his baby with Mike. So that's kind of where we landed. I think we talked about, Mi- Mike mentions like five thousand all-in, I think, right? Did I get that right?
He was kind of, yeah, he was bouncing around.
He's bouncing around. We we won't have a concrete number. We didn't promise anything, but we did say we would take a field trip out there.
Yeah.
This this all sounds really familiar to me, like this happened right before the twentieth.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, didn't we do uh something like
Yes.
Yeah, and we did a major renovation of it. Um, Jonathan did a fabulous job.
Yeah, so
Well, we certainly wanted to be in working order.
Yeah.
Wanted to be working order, so we said we would take a field trip out there and see what's what and then get some more information.
You know, it's hard to be
But I also wanted, since we're talking about budget, I thought it was important to mention it.
Okay. No, it's good to know. It's good to know that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, I'd be curious to know how's that, you know, how that works out and what the plans are.
I would be concerned if, you know, we just did something like what, three years ago and it's already in disrepair, that might be something
Well, that well, it's
No, it was disrepair.
Well, to make sure that there's not something
We we had to
It was a fix.
It was a fix. We had to, we had to buy house, um, the original plumbing.
It was a fix.
Yeah. Correct.
That was tremendously problematic. It was
Okay.
It was leaking, huh?
Okay, yes.
Yeah, so we, Jonathan, I must say, we, Jonathan and and the parks crew uh basically separated from that original system and a separate system for the waterfall and then uh isolated the, what had been a showerhead fountain before.
Yeah, literally, that's what they put in.
Uh So, you know, uh Yeah, so that was what we did.
Okay, so it's not, it's not redoing something that was done. It's kind of a messed up
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I
messed up.
Right.
And we
Enhancement.
With a two-year timeline, right?
Yes.
Something we don't have to do like right now, but having the foresight to say, hey, like this is something that we might wanna get going for the twenty-fifth anniversary. So we're gonna take a field trip out there first and see what's what.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I like the advanced planning.
Yes, thanks.
Any other questions for Ike?
Um, that's just the
No, Jen, I know you're online there, um, so if you have any questions, let us know.
Uh, Muri Center next, is that it?
All right.
Okay.
We uh just, Muri Center, we put a little extra money in 'cause we, we're going to uh paint the interior of the building. In the uh, sometime after January one. So, uh, so that's really it there. Art Center, we're gonna replace all the chairs. That was really the only change in that budget line.
Which line is that?
Uh, that was the departmental equipment, seven seventy-one fifty, zero two two zero.
Ah, okay. Fourteen hundred dollars.
So we need more folding chairs.
So, actually, yes, uh, like we're down, we originally took the white ones from Chat Pack
Right.
when they bought all new black chairs to put it in.
Right.
And we're down to probably, I think, less than thirty chairs now.
You're kidding.
No, and I don't know, they go out and then whatever, you know, not everything always comes back. So, uh
Who takes them out? 'Cause I know, I mean, the launchers put in stuff, they're not walking away then.
Yeah, he doesn't usually, so he uses the red ones for Memorial Day. Don't use those white chairs.
Well Right. So while they've been, some have been stashed here, like not made it back and have gone downstairs, but now they're not there anymore, so I'm not sure where they ended up. Um, we had forty-five or forty-six at one point, probably fifteen twenty ago, gone missing over the last few years, so. Uh, I don't know what they have, how many they have left up at the Chat Pack, that they originally bought, those black folding chairs. Oh, that's kind of where we go, you know, for the remembered ceremony at the gazebo. We get, we get all the chairs from Chat Pack and bring them down and we supplement the white ones that we have at the parks garage. Uh, but those, those are not inexpensive, those.
They go with the lifetime.
Yeah, the lifetime folding chairs.
You should have a like a count procedure. You know, once they get back in, count how many there are.
I I mean, aren't they tagged as inventory?
Yeah.
Yeah, but they're they're not tagged with any kind of electronic tag that you can do.
Yeah.
No.
We don't have enough air tags to
Hmm, goodness. Yeah, no air tag would be crazy. That'd be expensive than the air.
The weather not good with that, yeah.
She quite loves it.
That does not just
It's a mystery.
It probably wouldn't be a bad thing to look at at some point, just especially for the Chat Pack. 'Cause they do get used a bit. I have Chat Pack next. I don't really have much to do with that budget, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'll put this budget up here. This is just kind of what we have gone based on the historical costs uh of the Chat Pack. Um, you know, utilities is probably the biggest uh, biggest amount there. The maintenance and repairs, uh, those are HVAC contracts, et cetera, um. We've got the line of part-time help on top. That is Lisa Tizzo and Victor that runs the uh technical stuff up there. So um it it's just kind of what we had in the budget last year. Looks like that number will probably hold this year. We wanted to give ourselves some room. There's always um It's an older building. It's an older building, it needs repairs, and if we get to the end of the year and there's some money in the budget, we may be able to upgrade some other things there as well, so. Yeah, it's it's included just because uh it's not really under Ike's jurisdiction, I guess. Um but it's included for accounting purposes under the recreational line, so.
I know there's been some work about putting solar at chat pack, where does that come in?
Yeah, we're we're, we have a grant for that, um we're working through the contracting process right now. The grant requires us to hire certain contractors that have a certain certification. And um we've identified one, I think we're just going through the process to make sure they have that certification so that we can use them. And just, it gets into the procurement too, you're talking, I think the estimate was about a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. So you just have to make sure everything is compliant, we don't wanna lose the grant funds by using a contractor that's not on the list and um.
So um so once that gets done with assuming the grant covers it, does it have any impact on the budget for chat pack? Like, does it reduce utilities or?
It should reduce utilities, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, dur- yeah, during the day, we have been looking at battery storage.
Yeah, I I don't think we finalized the design exactly, I mean, I mean, in theory, we know what we're gonna put there, whether or not that's gonna go to a battery storage or it's gonna backfeed into the grid or uh I think that's still being decided.
So there's potential upside, I guess.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Who went next, Diane?
Uh special programs.
Okay.
Uh. Not much changes here, uh one, it's these post-faction programs, that's our eighty twenty. Uh and we're bringing it down a little bit this year, but it's all, it's all relative, so it's just the revenue and the uh and expenditure is just, they work together, uh these shows programs. Uh we've gotten.
Or did you, did you say you're reducing that because there are just some programs that you were running that were just not? Uh you had one vendor, I think, that wasn't.
Yeah, there was, there was a couple vendors that we uh it wasn't a good relationship, wasn't working well, so we've moved on uh from them. And then we have another one that started taking registration on their own, so it takes that revenue a lot of our system initially. Um so we're in the contract going forward, actually gonna kind of bring them back in, like I listed, it's gotta go through us.
If if they were taking registration on their own, do they then pay us?
Yes.
Yes.
Because, okay, because we can't net anything out of that, so.
Yeah. Correct, yeah, so they would, they cut us a chat, they cut us a chat, yeah, program center, whatever. But that's it for special programs, for anything else, the same. Youth athletics, uh no big changes there. Um I think the same with youth rec. Really, the only other one that we're gonna s- is camp, um.
Actually, before you move on from there, um the increase in six zero six five zero youth fitness
Yeah.
um on program support, is that staff?
Yeah. It's staff and it is busing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That just plus.
Uh yeah, chat call buses, another increase for next year.
Do they, the contract increased, it's not a need increase, it's just.
The contract increased, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh camps, so you're gonna see the biggest jump in the uh in the staffing. I'm not sure, Rob, if you've had a chance to talk to the board about what we've done, uh okay, great, uh.
We saved it for you.
Ah, thanks, we need that.
Let's hear it.
Uh well, basically, we've gone through and increased all of the uh salaries for next year, we did a two dollar increase across the board. Uh so it obviously, doing all that with camp staff hours, it's a big impact on the expenditure. So the flip side of that is we've also done an increase in the registration fee.
You know, you had a hard time finding staff last year, I mean.
We have for the last few years, and and we've tried to do minimal increases over the last couple of years, but it really, you know.
Our our lowest rates aren't even minimum wage.
No, they're not.
And I know that that affected our ability to have, you know, to increase enrollment.
And I know that being.
Yeah.
As well as the facilities, you know, I know that that was a big constraint, so.
Right, yeah.
Um does this bring them up to minimum wage?
Not the lowest, no, it does not, no, we are, okay.
Okay.
Do you do you think this will may have an impact on that?
I hope so, um you know, we're at thirteen fifty, we're competitive with the other municipalities, uh as far as camp staff go. I mean, so our our lowest rate for basically a sixteen-year-old was going to be thirteen fifty. And then we have higher rates for returning staff, right, that's for.
A brand-new.
Brand-new, yeah.
Lesser experience than.
Correct, and then we have our higher rates for returning staff, kind of the twice that come back.
Right, okay.
The problem here.
Yeah, well, I know people really value that program, so.
Yeah, it it really is, staff does a phenomenal job, it's been a great program for us, uh it sells out very quickly, as you're all aware of, aware of, um.
Westchester Magazine, I think, had best places to live and the camp was specifically called out in the recreation, and it's one of the highlights here, yeah.
Yeah, it was, yeah, the camp, and then we got uh we got recognition for the playground out back as well, so, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that was nice.
Yeah.
So it's noticed, for sure.
And I'll.
Thank you for bringing that up, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
You asked me the other night uh a question when I was doing the quarterly reports and and um we had seen uh an increase over the budget in the revenue, but also in the expenses, because it was on the salary cycle. So I'm actually putting together uh some numbers from the past few years, you were looking at the specific margins, so basically
Yes.
uh revenue over expense and and how were we doing, so I didn't quite have it ready for tonight, but I'll I'll have it for you this week.
Thank you.
Um and just show uh kind of historical look at where we've been.
Okay.
And you know, if it's it's not gonna be um you know, with a lot of our rec programs, we subsidize, especially the senior programs and those types of things.
Right.
The summer camp is one that has traditionally paid for itself, and it does, so you'll see that, but the margins vary, will vary over the years, so.
Right.
We'll take a look at that, and and I said I, just on the first glance, uh when she asked me, I wasn't in front of my computer, but I would say that the difference in the margin maybe for twenty fours, because we did increase the camp staff last year. Um the uh the pay rates, and we're doing it again this year, so that would affect the the margin, so.
Yeah, and we hadn't done a a fee increase in the last four years, so.
It was time.
Yeah, we had been trying to, like I said, make the minimal raises for staff, but we hadn't compensated for it on the other end.
No, they go hand in hand.
Yeah, so this year, uh the fee increase will will weather cover the increasing fees.
I assume the prices are still, the the registration prices are still quite favorable compared to other programs, so.
Yes. Yeah, we were very, very competitive again with the other municipalities, um
It seems.
and a whole lot cheaper than any private camps.
Yeah, so I think, you know, it's nice to invest in, you know, you're getting good quality staff and minimal increases, so.
Yeah, and we'll we'll continue to do the same thing this year, uh you know, like just to give the board kind of sneak peeking how we doing on on my end, my philosophy when it comes to registration is uh we have a number that we cap it at, right, and we'll say it's ninety for tots. Um that, and I keep that that number because I'm ninety-five percent sure that we are gonna be able to cover that with staff, right? So this past year, we did, we hit our ninety, and we had a whole bunch of people on the waitlist, but we took another twenty-seven kids off of that waitlist because we were able to pull an additional staff. Um I don't like to register for those numbers in case I I don't get lucky again and get those staff, all those staff coming back. You know, I'd rather tell people, know in February, and like, hey, we'll put you on a waitlist, but sit tight. Didn't have to call them in May and be like, oh, sorry, we couldn't get enough staff, and so I can't take your kid even though you registered, right? So that's kind of the way I work it each year, um so yes, initially.
Yeah.
That makes a lot sense.
Yeah, initially, we get, have you on the waitlist, but every year, we're able to pull, you know, anywhere from twenty to thirty kids up each year, so.
Yeah, tots and camping adventure, you usually get that waitlist moved in for sure.
Yeah, the same thing, we pulled thirty-one kids off the waitlist for Camp Adventure.
Yes, you do a great job.
So, you know, we we end up getting there, it's just out of the gate. You know, we just ask people to sit tight on the waitlist for a little bit. It is, they will panic more down their end, but you know, it's okay. Uh so that's a big thing with camp, obviously, it's, you know, the increase in the expense for the staff, but we will be increasing the camp fee to try to help offset that. Anybody has any other questions for that? Uh teens, I think we kept them pretty close to the same, we'll increase in the staffing, uh that's for our ski trips. Yeah, the busing, slight increase there to help offset that, that's the teen supplies, that's for the bus. I think it's it, the senior citizen trips, uh not to scare me, I'm skipping over adult recreation, but really, the only big change is, we had put monies in a while back for a potential uh basketball league. And we've just never been able to get it going, so we kind of, this year, just figured it was.
That was an adult.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know, like.
I think that is. Considering how popular it is.
Yeah, the Tuesday night does really well to pick up, but I think.
And they prefer to be indoors too, they don't like it out here, the adults.
Yeah. Yeah. Even though it stays busy, um I I think it's just, it's the mindset, right?
Yeah.
It's like going to pick up is fine, but if I now if I have to commit to a league on a weekly basis, that's where we kind of start losing people a little bit, so. Um so we'll see.
I think there's like a game at Club Fit, and I think they rent out the gym, like the pickup guys rent out the gym in the winter time. And I I agree with you, I think it's the ease and convenience of showing up when you want, playing when you can.
Yeah, cause it's very busy, you know, our drop-in program is very busy, I have to say that, so.
Yeah.
There's such a.
So happy with that.
There's no need for it, I don't, you know, may as well.
Yeah, so I just, if everybody saw the minus a hundred percent, that's why, that's just taking that out.
Plus twenty CLs for everybody.
Yeah. Uh senior citizen, the increases to trips, uh Christine and and her staff did a phenomenal job, kind of getting that program going again, uh we're all ready to come back out and go on trips now, far enough past uh past COVID and all that sort of stuff, so.
Yay.
Uh yeah, I believe, I mean, she has trips almost every month now.
Multiple, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they look fun.
Yeah.
They are.
Christine does an awesome job.
And they're uh.
She does an awesome job.
Yeah.
Have you added any different kinds of trips? I know they go Broadway, whether to.
We brought Broadway back this year, um so they've gone twice. Um we just got the the checks coming, and they got canned.
The refunds, the refund, I just got that.
Um but we've added White Plains Performing Arts Center, that's a great place to go, and they do three a year, so we try to do that.
Great.
And then Westchester um Community College, they have a culinary program, so we've been taking um trips there. You know, it helps support their program, and the seniors like to go out, so those are someone.
That sounds fun.
Okay, that sounds great.
Senior C D.
Yep, yep.
So did you eliminate all postage?
Oh, yeah, we were online and.
Yeah.
Great for us, that's great.
And flyers and calls and food community kind of has to be sent last, so getting everyone in that direction.
That's great, they are able to communicate that shift.
Yeah, yep.
And we really haven't seen a a negative impact, you know, there there's been no complaints from the the mailing, not getting the mailings anymore or anything like that, so.
It's real close.
Good.
It's so much better, and you could make changes as as they come, you know, whereas the mailing, you're really obviously static, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, pretty much. And then social services, no no big changes there. The part-time help that's on there, that's all of our drivers, which we we can, that can be a whole separate. Uh all the rise that we give to our residency years, um from grocery shopping to physical therapy to doctor's appointments to uh it's uh every day, all day downstairs, and we're fortunate enough that we've got a good team of drivers uh that are very reliable on a weekly basis, and we have a great team of volunteer drivers for our homework details. Uh which is uh our social worker, my staffer does an amazing job of that. So that's us in a nutshell.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, I, it's really a wonderful program.
Yeah. Thank you.
And thanks for putting our channel in the in the map this year.
We do what we can.
Marsha has it cut out on the.
Yeah, she cut it out, she put it up.
Outside the door.
Yeah.
Oh, good, you gotta celebrate it, yeah.
Thank you, I just wanted to say thank you too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All all of that senior programming sounds so amazing, and I didn't know about all of it, so that just sounds so great.
Thank you.
Thank you all, have a good day.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night, thank you.
See you tomorrow.
I am, come on in.
He's getting candy, he better bring.
Is he getting more?
He's hoarding the Twizzlers.
I don't think there's any more, there weren't a lot of them.
Yeah, you better not quit it anymore. Let's see.
Those suspenders people, you know, you know that, local government, we don't, sure.
Hello.
Hello, Christina.
Hello.
Thank you.
Take my hand.
Did you get candy? Everyone to share.
Get candy, get candy, get candy.
I have an receiver, I had enough.
Yeah, I have a receiver. So, uh seventy-one, if you're following in the PDF, um so Christine is here tonight to discuss uh two different budgets. Receiver taxes, which we'll start with, and then the town clerk as well. So Christina, we've just been kind of highlighting any significant changes or any budget lines that are uh of note.
Okay, um well, thank you for taking the time to speak with me. My budget is um one of the less complicated ones that you have to deal with, to say believe. But the rece- as far as the receiver, we went down with um some of the office supplies, because we found we weren't using them. Um that's line oh four ten, you'll also see the printing and publishing, we reduce, um I'm sorry, we actually increased that because um we've been seeing the prices of printing going up. And unfortunately, we've seen some, um when they tried to, they were trying to match the prices, but the quality was going down, which you don't think you usually have to specify paper quality, but that's kind of what they're doing, cause the margins are so slim, so we just, we need paper people for me to ink on.
So we, we go out to um the forms that the tax bills are printed, we we print them in-house, Christina prints them in-house. But the actual like template that it's on, that we actually will uh end up seeing.
We used Under Methlin?
I don't.
Yeah, I know.
You're enjoying, you're enjoying.
Very good, but yeah, the perfor- uh perforated ones and so forth, so.
Laughing that this is coming up.
Yeah.
This paper quality is just not what it used to be.
It's, I know, it's a silly.
All right, get started on that. Between uh Parks and Rec and, you know, the office, definitely elements here. But um yeah, this year, we had to reject a couple thousand reams that the, and have them reprint it, cause the followings not there. So we just wanna, we we said, you don't have to pay more, we have to do it, cause you can't read what they're printing. So it's a little better, right, we have to get the, we have to specify the weight and so forth, which we didn't have to do past years. Um other than that, it's very similar as um the rest of, rest of the budget, only a couple of pages. Any, if I have any question?
No, Christine, I think it's very straightforward.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, that that is, which is kind of nice, right?
What's the next page? Jump ahead to the color, it would be, eh, let's see, eh.
I don't think there's a tab.
Four, there's not a tab, it's a.
We're, we're using it right after the assessor.
To, yeah.
Eighty-four, you said?
Yeah, eighty-four.
Okay, so um the big change to this is the part-time health, and um.
while that seems like a large increase, you'll read um we, it's kind of been a little bit of change personnel, we've been lucky enough to have our former town clerk come back and work for us part-time, which is absolutely wonderful because there's nothing in the office she can't, she can't go and do, yeah, so we're very lucky to have her, um and as you know, there's been some change personnel on this floor and with Mary's help, with this differential, we're able to tread water, so that, like I said, while while it may seem like a large increase we're really getting a lot done with a little, so.
And I assume salaries is lower.
On, yeah, it's not my, on this floor.
Got it.
I mean, now you're anticipating that uh an assistant, right, a deputy?
Um yeah, we're we're trying to find um, trying to figure out what the right skill set for that person is, so that we can have the right person there, um when we hire someone, we want it to really be um the object success to be.
Yeah. Yeah, it's been included in the budget, but um as yet the position is open.
Yeah. Right, and um training instruction, we just um changed that to reflect what the experience was, and um then going forward, it um we increased, we um elections line is um what we expect to see from Westchester County. And Westchester Elections, my winter elections, fourteen fifty.
Fourteen fifty, yeah.
Yeah.
You said you expect that to get higher?
Yeah, we expect a little bit, so it's um it's kind of um comes in, goes out, and so it's we, it's just a reflection with the county.
Okay.
So so is the county reimbursing us?
Got it.
Mm-hmm.
For um.
So that's just.
Yeah, so it's it's what.
Okay. Pass through.
It's a.
Got it.
Imperfect work.
Yeah, that's a better, I know, I was thinking the same thing, I was trying to raise.
Couldn't greater.
Um the printing and publishing, again, for the town clerk, that's our best guess on what charges will be, that's.
Notices in the paper, things like that, and we have public hearings.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yes, and um at the time that this was printed, we were almost at our our max of twenty twenty-four, and we still had another quarter left, so we went up with that, um and then we go down to contractual services. Uh this change is really um due to, just the, again, these are, these are um things for like our parking system, basically all this is um our collections for the parking tickets, FBS, um there's our programming for the handheld meters, the um Pango app, the T-two systems, which is our loot machine, and so those are all.
And I think that reflects also a little bit of a different um with Pango, I think they're netting some of those fees out of the revenue as opposed to charging us for them, so in the past, we were invoiced for them, and now um they're netted out of the revenue, so you don't see it on the expense side here.
Mm-hmm, so, yeah, um.
Christina, are we still using like the passes for merchants or?
No, we're, um so we are not using them for the merchants, we only use them for merchant guests, because
Ah, okay.
Merchant guests, the benefit of that is you don't have to have a plate associated with it, and um this, that's a physical way that they just display it you give it to someone that's there for the day, every few hours, helping out, um so there's no way for us to use a plate here, so we are only using those um for that, so that's the well, um well, the most like, and um.
Got it.
Yeah. Yep, yep, and kind of utilities, that's. Uh and so yeah, the only going forward, I think, I don't think that's. Is there any questions? Because that's pretty much.
Now, just for Rob, the liability insurance um increase here, have you spread that out a little bit apart?
Yeah, that's.
So we're we're gonna see a little increase in each of the part-time, so.
You'll see bigger increases, I think we're gonna reapportion it, because that was a, I think, a disproportionate amount charged to this.
Yeah. Yeah, but I figure that's part of, you know, when you present the overall budget, that's part of what you're going to describe.
Yes, exactly. Yes. Yeah, you'll see that across all four funds, across multiple departments in those funds.
Yeah, I know it is.
Yeah, wherever we charge viability insurance, still it's increased, so.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
One more question? Very straightforward.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Christina.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good weekend.
Good. Nice.
Hi, good night.
Night.
Sure. Right, what's the next one?
This is the hardest, this is this is the heaviest of all.
Uh these are some of the the smaller budgets, we'll go through uh.
Page number six.
Page fifty-six, yeah, um so this starts, there's a couple of budgets that are uh the town supervisor, the town board, the town administrator, the town controller, um so I've got up on the screen, here's the the supervisor's office, so this is straightforward, uh. What's that?
It's the same.
Yeah, we we kept it the same, the the expenses from year to year don't typically change, there's money included here for historianic expenses, uh that's any of the the plaques or anything you need to order for Gray Williams, um I think that's also, is that where we charge the horse greely?
Yeah, I think so.
Cleaning the horse greely, kind of, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, every other year we have a clean.
Um you know, the Memorial Day Parade, the different office supplies that uh that we charge there, they're just small placeholder kind of in the supervisor, and then any dues that we pay on behalf of the town supervisor.
Okay. What's the increase in conferences and travel?
We went to the officers.
Sort of just reflect.
Association.
No, no, I know.
I'm assuming.
No, so I s- I know that is the variance from last year, but I think it's just previous year.
Yeah, I think the dues just went up.
The dues, yeah, just the expectation that the dues are gonna go up.
Big one.
Seventy-five dollars?
I was hoping it was fifteen.
Uh yeah, seventy-five dollars, right from twenty-nine twenty-five to three thousand.
Uh that's that's horrible. How about administrator?
Uh let's see, uh what do I have next, I have the town board next, forty-eight.
Page fifteen sixty.
Uh so the town board, those are your salaries in there.
Now I don't know where we are in the paper.
Forty-eight.
Uh.
The next page, um page seven.
Page seven. I want one forty-seven.
It's literally, it's it's the page after six.
Got it, thank you.
So while we're talking, I printed out, since it's kind of covered here, um we had two groups that submitted budgets, uh or submitted budget requests for twenty twenty-five, so one was the conservation board, and one was the um arts and culture. So, got the budgets, if they. Jen, I'm sorry, I know you have the arts and culture, because I got that from you, um and the conservation board, it's uh.
I can send it to her.
Go over that, yeah. Um so there have been, I will say upfront, there are no funds, um I received both of these after the original uh putting together the budget, but there are no specific funds included in this budget for these, they could be incorporated into, um you see, I've got seventeen thousand in boards and commissions, twenty-five thousand for town board special projects, and twenty-five thousand for town special events. So those are the lines that the town board has discretion to allocate to some of these different committees, um the conservation board, just kind of summing up what they've requested, they've put in a request for forty-seven hundred and five dollars, um they have a B-city annual fee, an Arbor Day Foundation sign, uh some new metal signs highlighting the Tree City, B-City, and the Mayor's Monarch pledge, and their big ask is that they'd like to bring in a speaker, um do you wanna?
I will add, yeah, I mean, just I, the the big ask is the speaker, um but they also think that they can get some cosponsors
Mm-hmm.
that would help help um bring the total cost, yes, so um.
A surprise. Are they thinking of cosponsors within the town, such as the library or outside of the.
I. Within within the town, um but there's a number of other groups that they think they could reach out to, um I don't have the list handy, it's it's on the lot of bond and.
Okay. Right, that's fine.
It's pretty broad, yeah, but it's local.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah.
Um there's, there has been previously interest in a speaker like this, and this speaker in particular has been very popular in some other communities nearby, so um you know, if, I I don't think the the bottom line is gonna be anywhere near that, um if they get it done. So, and I told them to, told them to ask for everything, and.
Sounds good.
No, 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 that's what what they they should do.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
So you can see at least year-to-date what boards and commissions have actually spent.
Mm-hmm.
In the twenty twenty-four actual.
Yeah, eleven hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Eleven hundred dollars.
Yeah, so I think we've got some room.
Yeah, so that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, we definitely do, you know.
Right, so um yeah, I mean, I personally would suggest to the board that that certainly the conservation board is something we can cover easily. Um and if it turns out that our calculations are not correct, then you know, we would look to adjust next year.
Yeah, um.
And I.
Or maybe.
Jill's opinion to grant it or not.
Right, so I think that Jill's point earlier, when she talked about the boards, is that it, the town board has the ultimate discretion, right? The the committees, advisory boards, et cetera, can bring proposals to the town board, and you can grant them, and there's, there are monies at your discretion to to approve these requests, so.
Mm.
Um Jen, did you wanna talk at all about, I know uh you had submitted for us the arts and culture, um the proposal, and and they have had a total uh requested funding of thirty-five thousand, did you wanna go through it, or I can read through what you, at least summarize what you have here?
Uh sure, I I'm happy to go through it, um I just, I forwarded it to all of you via text, um to the town board and via email to all of you, um just in case you don't, do you have it in front of you, or?
You do.
Yes, we do, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, okay, um yeah, I mean, as you know, we already talked about the three artists for the mural project. If we really want the under-the-bridge project to look complete, we have five more spots, right, that we, and it's, so the um under-the-bridge project, you know, on one side of the bridge, the under, the alcoves are taller, um and then shorter, so that we priced the taller ones at fifteen hundred each, which would cover art supplies um and their work, and on the shorter side, it's twelve fifty per artist. So we um, you know, we set those fees based on what was approved um over the summer, and so now going forward, like as Vicky has said in the past, we wanna stay consistent and make sure any artist that we use in twenty twenty-five earns the same that the artists from twenty twenty-four are getting, um so that that's, that's, you know, the public works of art, that's where that twelve thousand comes from. Um we really would love to get um some finances approved for creating concerts, music concerts at Chat Pack. We do expect, and of course, it'll take time um to um really get deep with revenue, but we do expect to um get a lot of what we put forward um back in revenue and ticket prices, uh but we do need to sign contracts with bands, so we do need to have money to put forward and to commit to it, um but hopefully, you know, we'll get, we'll get money back for the live events. Um we talked about exhibitions in Chat Pack space, um because there, on on the walls in Chat Pack, there is an opportunity for creating um exhibits there.
Mm-hmm.
Um and we did price out a curator um who would charge like twenty-five hundred per event to pull together artists. Um so we wanted to just have leeway to then um, you know, secure artists and and maybe do more than one in a year. Um and then supplies and materials is just, you know, for um festivals or um markets in town, um where we, you know, bring art supplies and have kids do things, um you know, Community Day, that kind of thing, um so that that's basically where we came up with all of that.
Okay, thank you, Jen, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So it it would be great to have Chat Pack, you know, be a, you know, diversified venue, I I like that idea. You know, art art gallery and performance space, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
You you had mentioned that you felt like with the live events that it, there would be some revenue associated with it, do you have a guess, I mean, what the net expense would actually end up being?
What the net expense would be?
Or do you think it would be net out to zero, because it would cover?
Yeah, I mean, it's it's so hard to know, Holly, I mean, so we we put out feelers to some local popular bands, you know, um kind of similar to what Lino does, but but actually more like eras bands instead of um bands that, um what do you call them when they act like they're?
Tribute.
Cover band?
Bands, exactly, yeah, more more like eras bands, so that you. Playing the music.
Corrected one day.
Um. Yeah, there, and there's something like, you know, uh six thousand for an event, um and then, you know, we would probably ask like some local, like wine shop or um food vendors to come in at their own. Uh they apparently do this, where they come and they set up, and then they um get what, you know, they take away whatever they um sell, and we get a cut of it, so there'll be ticket sales, and then there'll be the cut of that, um and and hopefully, we'll 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 earn back the six thousand or so that we spend, um I don't know, it's, it, you know, we have to see how it it pans out. I mean, if you go to places like Lucy's or um, there's a place that they all go to, s- some people on our committee, and I'm blanking on what the name of it is, but it's a guy's name, um and and they're packed, you know, people really love to see these bands, so.
You don't mean Daryl's place, dude?
Daryl's, that's it, yeah.
I saw Michael Jackson tribute band there, I was just saying.
I think we're in.
Um so anyway, that that's what the committee is is hoping for, um yeah.
Okay, okay, very good.
Um and the um, the last item of note in the town board budget is a Newcastle Community Media Center, that is the allocation to uh to fund NCS, NCCMC for the the base services, so um we get approximately, used to be a little over four hundred thousand dollars a year, the last couple of years, the franchise fees have kind of tailed off.
Yeah.
Uh so we're down probably about three sixty, three seventy-five a year, but uh far more than we're actually paying out. So that, I think that wraps the town board, we'll take a look at administrator next, uh it's fifty-nine, I think, if you're following the PDF, if not, uh sorry, sixty, Jill had like the description, page twelve of one forty-nine, if you have the paper copy.
Hi, Vam, hello again, sorry. Yeah, looking at.
Uh not really any changes in in this budget, uh the longevity paid change, because Lauren is getting longevity now.
I think.
Really, Lauren?
Right.
Uh let's see, and the last one, we'll jump over.
Liability insurance. That seems like that seems, oh, like a disproportionate hit.
Uh yeah, um the, again, it's apportioned out, as the total cost of it is uh.
I'm just teasing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that really is.
What is the final lot that went on the town administrator?
So about one point two million, yeah.
I was wondering about that.
No, as a percentage increase from last year.
Uh it was about um forty-five percent or something like that.
So then that seems pretty fair, Joe.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Forty five percent a while or?
Uh I can tell you I wasn't responsible for it, Kenny, okay.
Seems a little like. I knew you weren't.
One more page now.
We didn't.
Uh let's see, jumping to page sixty five, this is my budget, or fourteen of one forty nine.
I almost went too far.
Changes here, my my staff has gone over quite a bit, uh gone through quite a bit of turnover the last few years, uh about two years ago, I was sitting comfortably with a very seasoned staff. Uh in that space of time, I lost my payroll person who had about thirty years of experience. Uh this June, I lost my um
Water.
A water billing person who had about twelve years in my department and close to twenty with the town. And uh I am expecting to lose unfortunately my uh right hand lady. Diana, next year, so um we can talk further in uh executive session when we do a salary discussion about some of the changes in my office, but that is why uh the salaries uh have a change. And it's expected, I'm gonna have some overlap because I won't be able to um have somebody come in when she walks out the door, I will have to have some overlap with her.
Okay.
Yeah.
Pretty critical piece of the operations there, we like show, we don't miss any.
Yeah, and uh I did include some part-time help. Um she's indicated that once she retires on a permanent basis that she would come back part-time, you know, on a asked needed basis to kind of get through maybe the audit, maybe, you know, specific things that I need help for, so I've included funding for there.
It's very gracious.
So, and this includes another position?
It does, yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Um and that's about it for mine, uh the maintenance and repairs, just my uh my software costs, my accounting software. Uh the audit costs are apportioned out through each fund, uh the general fund is under my budget. Central services, which are just things like uh postage and office supplies that go in the supply room. Uh the telephone and cell charges are under this budget as well, no huge changes there.
But something going down is kind of surprising.
Um.
We've got a few.
Those are.
No, but I mean, like for the, you, for like the utilities and operating expenses, those don't seem to
It's, so it's not, if you look at it, I I'm adjusting it more based on historical, so um
Paying too much.
the the variance is due to the budget, and we, where you see like in twenty twenty four, I budgeted a hundred and four thousand, but in twenty two and twenty three, I spent ninety seven and ninety, um so I'm just adjusting it to reflect what we're actually paying and taking out some of the cushion that was there. Those are hard to budget, the telephone costs. The public health line, this uh corresponds with the hundred twenty five thousand in revenue, this is the drug-free communities. Uh we typically don't match the one twenty five in either revenue or expense, but that's the amount of the grant that we can use, so I just typically budget that revenue and expense, that's the same, yeah.
Does not necessarily either, I mean.
Uh I think that's it for me. Yeah.
That's good.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Does that conclude everything?
For this evening, it does.
This evening, so on on Friday, we're gonna be talking with uh Bart and uh the, some of the heavier um departments, so you've got TPW, Order, Emergency Plan, Police. Um okay, but we'll start early and we'll go through it.
Yeah, so we're starting at um eight o'clock.
From Friday morning.
Going through, no candy at eight o'clock, no, no.
No, but 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 you may wanna bring a little something to it.
All right, all right. And we should be ending at eleven thirty, okay.
So there's one thing, we said special districts, and typically there's not much to discuss, these are some of the smaller sewer districts, the one thing I do wanna point out, if I can find it, is the um, is the Northern Fire Protection District. Which is.
Rob, I wanted to ask you about the Bravort Road District, since I live on Bravort Road, I I don't even know what that is.
Uh okay.
Is that the sewer district?
Yeah, uh so let me just touch on um.
Yeah.
Oh, is it the sewer district, is that what it is?
Yeah, I think it's S seven, Sewer District seven, but let me just touch on the Northern Fire District page. Uh you can look at it on the screen because I I have a hard time finding it, I didn't tab it here for you, so I'm just pointing out the contractual services, again, an increase here from nine hundred and fifty thousand that was budgeted uh in twenty four to one million ninety one thousand, these are the contractual fire protection services that we receive from Mount Kisco. Uh and this has been a multi-year kind of ramp up from them, they borrowed, I don't know what the ultimate number ended up being,
End up.
they borrow more than once, and they've renovated their their three firehouses.
They borrow, not they borrow, no.
Yes.
Um and.
They can borrow this, that's the first time.
Yeah, and uh on top of that, unfortunately, because of our our increased tax base that we had this year, what we've added to the assessment rule, and the way they apportion it, we we received an even
An inordinate amount.
Yes.
Disproportionate amount of that increase this year as well. So I think this is the last year that we're going to see a large jump like this, but this, when uh when you hear me talk and and give the budget presentation for the entire budget, this is one of the things that affects me because we, affects us, I should say, because we have uh a limited amount under the tax gap, and we have to use a lot of it that we have for this one specific district that unfortunately we're not able to.
Effect anyway, I'm.
Yeah, doing it. So uh that is the one area of note there, uh.
And and it's not that the, it's not that Millwood and and Newcastle Fire don't also have significant changes, it's just that our residents vote on those budgets.
Yeah.
Right.
So they have a good.
Rob, what is that page number?
Yeah.
Uh this is two thirteen.
Okay. Um but what?
And you know, let me, I can also show.
Cause I can't, you know, we can't really see those numbers.
Yeah. Uh.
People at home can, on on the screen.
I'll just bring up one of the charts that I have, and it shows the uh the cost of fire protection services. Uh you're in either one of these three areas in town, you're in either the Millwood Fire District, the Newcastle Fire District, or the Northern Fire Protection District. So if you look on this chart, the top blue line, uh which is Millwood, and and you see that jumped up uh after they completed the renovations to their firehouse. Um the Northern Fire Protection District, it's the middle pink line, and you see what happened in two thousand nineteen to twenty, the big jump there, they had one large jump, and then they've had another couple large jumps, uh when the second round of uh of their borrowing kicked in, and then you see on the bottom, the jump for the Newcastle Fire District. This is their tentative budget, I believe they held the, their hearing on it or their presentation, so these are the numbers that I had published at the time they provided, it could have changed since then, but uh you see the big jump in Newcastle at this point.
Which was to be accepted, they approved on fire, so.
Right. But even Newcastle, you see, this is, this is based on an average, uh about a hundred and seventy thousand assessed value, which is about a one point two million dollar
Right, I mean.
home in the town of Newcastle, and um you know, even Newcastle is still the lowest among them. So I haven't looked at their amortization schedule to see what that's gonna look like in the future, but uh that's.
It doesn't look like an inordinate.
No.
Jump for, you know, especially if you're parent.
In a single year, it is, it's it's a big hit for them when you look at it that way, but if you look at it in comparison to the other two.
But a trend, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is one of the reasons I present this, to just so that everybody can take this into context.
Yeah. It's helpful.
Yeah. Uh and let me just touch on before we leave, Jen asked about the Bravort uh sewer district.
So several years ago, Jen, um there was a property on Bravort whose septic failed. And uh they needed to install a sewer, does this sound familiar to you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so the entire fifty one percent of the block had to go into the district, and it did, and um but you end up having to um uh there's there's capital costs of the actual installation of the sewer, and then there's O and M, which is operation and maintenance, which is ongoing care of the sewer system, so because there's only like maybe seven houses.
Yeah.
Um and it's it's uh divvied up um as the law, which is on the basis of uh the assessed value.
That's us.
It's how they determine everybody's share.
That'll be.
And see, I have a debt schedule here, I can tell you when the debt will be paid off, and you can expect that part of the tax to drop off.
Has it been thirty years already, really?
No.
Not thirty, but it's been a while, it's.
Oh, sure, um.
Uh.
That's fifteen or so.
See.
Yeah, I've, yeah, you're absolutely right.
Bravort Sewer, so it looks like, and I can't read that, twenty twenty nine, if my eyes are.
Oh, really? That's pretty good.
Twenty, sorry, twenty
Do you need to have a line call?
My eyes are so bad. I'm looking at uh right there, going across, it's twenty thirty, that the debt will expire for that district.
Twenty thirty.
Okay.
That's pretty great.
It's still pretty soon, yeah.
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 Wow.
All right, we're in the final stretch, I'll let my neighbors know.
All right, um that's all I have for the evening.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much, Rob.
Thank you.
Continue it on Friday.
All right.
Please.
Oh, yes.
All right, so I moved retroactively approved the payment of claims in the amount of five hundred seventy two dollars, pardon me, hundred seventy three thousand nine hundred sixty three dollars, twenty cents. This done, sorry, A P check registered, heat cell lab, heat cell report, going on over nine twenty two report. This is a claim listed on Monday, October ninth.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Do you have a motion, Roger?
Remove.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you everyone.
Thank you everyone.